Yeah, that's right. You get your plate. Yeah, that's right. Exactly.
What a crowd tonight, and deservedly so, because we have some honorees tonight on our agenda who are very special to our community. So we're looking forward to the program tonight, which, as you saw earlier on a City Madison Facebook post, calling this kind of heroes' night, because it's nothing short of heroism of the people who are going to honor tonight. Today is Tuesday, July the 19th, 2022, Madison City Council. We are streaming live on City of Madison YouTube channel and as well recording the meeting for those who cannot be here. We'll get through the agenda, but first, as always, we'll rise, bow our heads, remove our hats, recite the Lord's Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll get into the meeting. Thank you.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Christ is the Kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I am religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I would like to give a special welcome to State Representative Randy Fry, who is in the audience with us and will help us with tonight's celebration ceremonies. Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Krebs.
Here.
Lucy DiTillo.
Here.
Shaper.
Here.
Chatham.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Dan DiTillo.
Here.
Counsel, our last meeting was July the 5th. If you had an opportunity to review the coming council minutes, and if so, we'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion for the minutes to be approved, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I'd like to invite Chief John I. Wallace to the podium to recognize lifesaving award presentations to many of our officers and deputies in the community. Chief?
Mayor, thank you. Counsel, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Very special occasion for the Madison Police Department. If you guys just want to line up right there, it'd be great. Yes, yep, that'd be great. It's okay. Chief, can we get them on that side over there? Yes, okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. It's going to wind around that direction. There we go.
It's fine to me.
Thank you. There you go. Is that better? Okay. Perfect. Counsel, on July 3rd, 2022, approximately 1:00 a.m., Madison Police and Madison Fire responded to 627 Walnut, reference an apartment building fire. Upon arrival, officers discovered the worst-case scenario: six people trapped in a burning upstairs apartment, screaming for help, with the only escape blocked by flames. Officers immediately gave instructions to the occupants to break out the window for escape purposes. By all accounts, a brave teenage girl broke out the window as officers gathered below. Instructions were given to drop the youngest child, age three, out of the window to officers' waiting arms. After some verbal coaxing, they did just that. The young child was safely caught, as were the rest of the five remaining family members. Tonight, we honor, as our sign says, outside the Madison Police Department, true Madison heroes. Before handing out the recognition they rightfully deserve, let's watch some body cam footage of the night in which these heroes saved lives. I'm not talking about bullets or guns, but about heart and spirit. Once again, young Americans wear their uniforms and serve their flag with honor and pride. From the NATO lines to the military zone of Korea, and at bases and ports all across America and all over, young Americans are carrying on in your footsteps, in the courageous footsteps of those who stood in our way, so that others might have a chance to find freedom, peace, and happiness. Every time I see a young serviceman when I get a phone call, thinking about what we already have that serve our country and protecting our freedom with real honor, courage, and ethics, I learn something, bring as hard as I can to make sure that our nation keeps its special covenant to those who serve, to those who kept the personal integrity of our people. Because of you, America's best days are still to come, and the faith, freedom, and courage, there's no limit to what America can and will accomplish.
State Representative Randy Fry and Prentice and family would like to invite you to the podium.
President Reagan said, because of John, because of Prentice, America's best days are still ahead. I could read this resolution, whereas John Minke exhibited the finest tradition in the United States and City of Madison in volunteering for military service for our country, whereas John Minke paid the ultimate price for the defense of our country. Whereas the sacred memory of John Minke shall live on through the recognition of the acts of service and sacrifice to us. Whereas Prentice Shelton was born June 4th, 1931, in Jersey County, volunteered to serve the United States Army in New Albany on January 25th, 1949, at the age of seventeen. Whereas Corporal Shelton was reassigned to the 31st Regiment, 7th Infantry Division, as part of General MacArthur's massive amphibious landing near Nishen, Korea on September 15th, 1950, at the beginning of the battle until the break was over. Corporal Shelton's unit moved south to Busan for reconstitution, and subsequently relocated to northern part of the Korean Peninsula near the Chozen principle. Whereas 120,000 members of the People's Volunteer Army of the Republic of China surprised and circled about 30,000 US and Allied forces on November 27th, 1950, during freezing weather, the troops were able to break the encirclement and make a fighting retreat in Korea on the east coast on December 13th, 1950. Corporal Shelton was evacuated by ship, south to Busan, and served in total five battle campaigns until he departed Korea in September 1951, and then served at Fort Hood, Texas, in Fort Eustis, Virginia, and was honorably discharged at Fort Eustis in July 1952. For his service in Korea, Corporal Shelton was awarded the Army World War II Occupation Medal, the Japan Class, the National Defense Service Medal, the Korea Service Medal, the five Bronze Stars, the United Nations Service Medal, and the Presidential Unit Citation of the Republic of Korea. Prentice Shelton epitomizes the spirit of this prestigious award. It resolves the City of Madison's honor to present the Prentice Shelton 2022 John Minke Award for Military Service. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, concludes our ceremony. I just, like I said, I just can't say, and I feel the entire City of Madison feels the same way, how proud we are of each and every one of you and how fortunate we are to have such caring individuals on our department. You guys, none of you were trained to do this. We don't receive a training on catching people that jump out of a second-story window. But you guys formulated a plan quickly, and I'll tell you what, as I look up at the photograph, and I can imagine as they were looking down, man, did they see a bunch of loving arms waiting on them down there. That's the most important thing. So, our hats off, our gratitude, we thank you all very much. Okay, unless you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can, but otherwise dismissed. Thank you.
Officers, thank you. Thank you for every day, what you're doing for our community. Chief, thank you for your leadership here, too.
Would it be okay if I just briefly, real quick, just had a couple of things for the council? I did give you our monthly reports. As you can see, a lot of our traffic stops are certainly staying up. The only really, one thing that was really notable was B&amp;E and theft of others, basically just general thefts, went from 40 in May to three in June. I'm just going to mark it down, a good patrolling. I don't really have an answer for it, but it's certainly in the right direction, what we certainly like to see. Real quickly, because I know we've got a very special event to take part in here shortly, we did, the mayor and I did meet with the Madison School Board in a work session about a week and a half ago, offered any support that we can certainly give the school system with regards to school safety, and we plan on meeting again this coming Thursday with a lot of the, several of the school officials to go over our safety plans, make sure all policies and procedures are in place. We do have an active shooter training course set up for July 28th and 29th prior to school starting. It's going to be held at EO Muncie. We've invited all area law enforcement to participate in. We have purchased some aerosol weapons. I don't know if you've ever been shot with them, little plastic BBs, but they sting. It really helps us training-wise. If you know you're going to get hit with something that hurts a little bit, you're going to react differently rather than just saying pow, pow. So, we're very fortunate to have had the money in the budget this year to buy six of the aerosol weapons, which are exactly like ours, except with the orange safety tip, and then the rifles as well. So, we're really looking forward to this training. There's been a lot of effort, a lot of hard work put into it, and in light of what happened in Uvalde right before school let out, you know, we felt it was important really to refresh and hone in on our skills. But God forbid it ever happened here, but we're certainly going to go through the drill and practice hard on that. We do have new body cams. Oh, there it is. You can tell I'm used to wearing it. We actually had body cams in the past. We did receive a grant to update them. Our old body cams, as you all know, they run out quickly as far as the technology, and there's always upgrades. So, we did receive a $21,000 grant from Homeland Security of Indiana, and we matched that with $7,000, and we have new body cam Pro Vision 4s for all the officers. Much, much better than what we had. They're military-grade, they've got GPS stamp tagging, so as we're on the scene, you're going to see exactly, you're on, you know, Maple Street, a certain location, the address, and that type of thing. So, that's going to be very nice. One thing I like about them is they will last the full entire shift, as far as the batteries go, the mounting's better, and most importantly, if we could set these up, so if I'm on scene and I click mine on, and the other officer maybe hasn't clicked his on, forgot, or whatever, it'll kick theirs on as well. So, everybody on scene, their body cameras will kick on along with the one that's activated. So, a lot of upgrades, a lot of improvements on that, so very glad to have that done, and I'd like to thank Seth Melton for all of his hard work on obtaining that grant for us. So, having said that, I don't believe that I have anything else, unless the council has something for me.
Chief, do you want to mention the action that Board of Public Works took yesterday with regards to additional officers for our part-time?
Yes, yeah, we do have a couple of additional officers joining the department. Keith Hartman, who's a retired Jefferson County Sheriff's Officer and a current police officer at a regional hospital in Columbus, he's coming back to us on a part-time basis, and Brent Bennett, who has about six and a half, seven years of law enforcement experience, works at Arvin Sangho, but wants to come back on a part-time basis. In a key role, those two, they're really integral parts of our emergency response team, so it's great to get those guys back. We get that team up and running and ready to roll now, so it's good to have them back on board. So, this part-time program has really helped out and brought some really quality individuals back to our department for special needs and should we need them in any event of emergency. So, very glad to have them back. Thanks for that, Mayor.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. We appreciate you.
Chief, keep up the good job. Counsel will now turn to resolutions or bills, and I would like to ask Keely to start the video, and tonight's a special night because we are presenting the John Minke Award for Military Service, and we'd like to start with this video. Sounds like the sound's going to work.
Ready to relax for a second?
Okay.
If the sound worked out, it's like people drink the whole way up there, that you can use the IT and practice it, and sometimes it doesn't work, and then you're going to have to...
Counsel, while they're working that out, I may go ahead and give a couple of updates. One is, I want to thank everybody for attending the groundbreaking... Oh, here we go. Go for it.
I'm not talking about bullets or guns, but about heart and spirit. Once again, young Americans wear their uniforms and serve their flag with honor and pride. From the NATO lines to the military zone of Korea, and at bases and ports all across America and all over, young Americans are carrying on in your footsteps, in the courageous footsteps of those who stood in our way, so that others might have a chance to find freedom, peace, and happiness. Every time I see a young serviceman when I get a phone call, thinking about what we already have that serve our country and protecting our freedom with real honor, courage, and ethics, I learn something, bring as hard as I can to make sure that our nation keeps its special covenant to those who serve, to those who kept the personal integrity of our people. Because of you, America's best days are still to come, and the faith, freedom, and courage, there's no limit to what America can and will accomplish.
State Representative Randy Fry and Prentice and family would like to invite you to the podium.
President Reagan said, because of John, because of Prentice, America's best days are still ahead. I could read this resolution, whereas John Minke exhibited the finest tradition in the United States and City of Madison in volunteering for military service for our country, whereas John Minke paid the ultimate price for the defense of our country. Whereas the sacred memory of John Minke shall live on through the recognition of the acts of service and sacrifice to us. Whereas Prentice Shelton was born June 4th, 1931, in Jersey County, and volunteered to serve the United States Army in New Albany on January 25th, 1949, at the age of seventeen. Whereas Corporal Shelton went through training at Camp Red Ridge in Kentucky, and afterwards boarded the ship in San Francisco in May 1949 on a 13-day cruise to serve as Army Occupation Forces Peacekeeper in Sendai, Japan, with the Ninth Corps in corps. Whereas Corporal Shelton was reassigned to the 31st Regiment 7th Infantry Division as part of General MacArthur's massive amphibious landing near Nishen, Korea, on September 15th, 1950, at the beginning of the battle until the break was over. Corporal Shelton's unit moved south to Busan for reconstitution, and subsequently relocated to northern part of the Korean Peninsula near the Chozen principle. Whereas 120,000 members of the People's Volunteer Army of the Republic of China surprised and circled about 30,000 US and Allied forces on November 27th, 1950, during freezing weather, the troops were able to break the encirclement and make a fighting retreat in Korea on the east coast on December 13th, 1950. Corporal Shelton was evacuated by ship, south to Busan, and served in total five battle campaigns until he departed Korea in September 1951, and then served at Fort Hood, Texas, in Fort Eustis, Virginia, and was honorably discharged at Fort Eustis in July 1952. For his service in Korea, Corporal Shelton was awarded the Army World War II Occupation Medal, the Japan Class, the National Defense Service Medal, the Korea Service Medal, the five Bronze Stars, the United Nations Service Medal, and the Presidential Unit Citation of the Republic of Korea. Prentice Shelton epitomizes the spirit of this prestigious award. It resolves the City of Madison's honor to present the Prentice Shelton 2022 John Minke Award for Military Service. Governor, Randy Fry also has a gift for you, along with this resolution and the 2022 John Minke Award. Mr. Shelton, this is a flag. I'm sure you're aware of it, you fought for it. Thank you, sir. It's an American flag. It was flown at the Indiana State House on September the 20th, 2021. It comes with a certificate of authenticity from Governor Holcomb, and I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome to address those who are grateful for your service.
What do you say, Helen? Thank you very kindly, but I didn't know. An old man could cry. But I appreciate this very much, but all I can say is, Mayor Bob, you made this nice ending for me, and whatever you do, keep on doing good work for our River Town of Madison. Thank you very much.
Well, if you mind, I also want to say that last month I had the honor to attend a ceremony recognizing the service of John, our mother patriots who visited the Indiana State House. Thank you very much. I'm glad you could join us. 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 Whereas one hundred twenty thousand members of the People's Volunteer Army of the Republic of China surprised and circled about thirty thousand US and Allied forces on November 27th, 1950. During freezing weather, the troops were able to break the encirclement and make a fighting retreat in Korea on the east coast on December 13th, 1950. Corporal Shelton was evacuated by ship, south to Basan, and served in total five battle campaigns until he departed Korea in September 1951, and then served at Fort Hood, Texas, in Orkussus, Virginia. Was honorably discharged at Orkussus in July 1952. For his service in Korea, Corporal Shelton was awarded the Army World War II Occupation Medal with Japan class, a National Defense Service Medal, a Korea Service Medal, the Five Bronze Stars, United Nations Service Medal, and the Presidential Unit Citation of Republic of Korea. Prentice Shelton epitomizes the spirit of this prestigious award. It resolved, City of Madison's honor present to Prentice Shelton, two thousand and twenty-two John Menke Award for Military Service. Representative Randy Frye also has a gift for you along with this resolution. Number two thousand and twenty-two John Menke Award.
Mr. Shelton, this is a flag. I'm sure you're aware of it. You fought for it. Thank you, sir. It's an American flag. It was flown at the Indiana State House on September the 20th, 2021. It comes with a certificate of authenticity from Governor Holcomb, and I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you, Councilor.
You're welcome to address those who are grateful. Please, sir.
What do you say, Ellen? Thank you very kindly, but... I didn't know. An old man could cry. But I appreciate this very much, but... All I can say is, Mayor Bob, you made this nice ending for me, and whatever you do, keep on doing good work for River Town and Madison. Thank you very much.
Well, if you mind, I also want to say that last month I had the honor to attend a ceremony recognizing the service of John, our mother patriots who visited the Indiana Veterans Committee, in honor of the service of John Menke. And this was the rise and remember. I want to present you with a showcase from the Honor Guard from that day. It's one I put in my office, and it's something I'll never forget. We have many veterans among us tonight. We're so grateful for your all service. My wife is here.
Whew, gotta catch my breath because such an honor. Prentice, thank you so much for being here tonight with us. We'll move on to the rest of the agenda. We have four ordinances on first reading, so I'll turn it over to our counsel, Joe Jenner. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.
The first ordinance is an ordinance of additional appropriation, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash eleven, sponsored by Councilman Bartlett. Whereas it's been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one be resolved at the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, Jefferson County, that the expenses for the taxing unit following the additional sums of money are hereby appropriated on the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. And this is an amount of four forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars, and it's out of the Aviation Grant Match Fund. Sorry. Okay.
So the city airport received a wildlife fence grant in 2019 per the application which was recently reviewed.
I want to get closer to the mic there.
Is that better? Per the application which was recently reviewed, it is required that the city appropriate funds in order to track expenses specifically associated with this grant in order to meet the federal compliance guidelines. The city received FAA funds for this grant in May in the amount of forty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-eight cents, and additional two thousand four hundred ninety-sixty-one from Indot in June, and the city was required to match that amount of the twenty-four ninety-sixty-one in order to make payments on this project totaling forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. So... The reason we're having to do this is because these funds were not appropriated when City Council adopted the two thousand twenty-two budget. And as this is coming out of the airport fund, it doesn't have any effect on the general levy and won't affect any of our rates.
So that's on first reading, and it will go on to second reading. Thank you, Katie. The next one is ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twelve, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Krebs. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing the Nuisance Abatement Nonreverting Fund. Whereas the City of Madison will incur certain expenses related to public nuisances, and whereas the City of Madison wishes to establish a fund to deposit grant funds and other funds and pay expenses to enforce Chapter Ninety-Six, which is the nuisance chapter. Now therefore be ordained by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana as follows. An account is established for the purposes of defraying cost of administrative and judicial abatement of public nuisances. The fund shall be reimbursed by collection from property, from the property and property owner, or any responsible person specified in Chapter Ninety-Six and by the courts. This fund may be operated and used in conjunction with the procedures ordered or authorized under this or in any other abatement provision of the City of Madison, Indiana. The account shall be named the Nuisance Abatement Nonreverting Fund, and all funds contained in the account shall be expended only for the purpose of exclusive purposes of paying expenses related to the administrative and judicial abatement of public nuisances. The account shall be nonreverting and exist perpetually unless terminated by subsequent ordinance enacted by the Common Council. If this account is terminated by subsequent ordinance enacted by the Common Council, the remaining balance of the terminated account shall revert to the general budget of the Common Council. Okay, the next one is ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing the Planning, Preservation, and Designation Nonreverting Fund. Whereas the City of Madison will incur certain expenses related to planning, preservation, and design, and whereas the City of Madison wished to establish a fund in order to deposit and collect fees, penalties, and/or fines and other funds to pay expenses on printing, advertisements, purchase of office supplies, professional development, or professional contracted services for the Planning and Preservation and Design Department. Now therefore be ordained by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana as follows. An account established for the purposes of depositing monies from fees, penalties, fines collected by the Planning, Preservation, and Design Department, donations, grants, appropriations from city accounts, or from any other lawful source for paying required obligations for the City of Madison Planning, Preservation, and Design. The account shall be named the Planning, Preservation, and Design Nonreverting Fund, and all funds contained in the account shall be expended only for the exclusive purposes of paying expenses related to printing advertisements, purchase of office supplies, professional development, or professional contracted services for the Planning, Preservation, and Design Department. The account shall be nonreverting and exist perpetually unless terminated by subsequent ordinance enacted by the Common Council. If the account is terminated by the subsequent ordinance enacted by the Common Council, the remaining balance of the terminated account shall revert to the general budget of the Common Council. And the last ordinance on first reading is ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, amending ninety-six point nine-nine of the City of Madison Nuisance Health and Safety Section ninety-eight point zero-six of the City of Madison, Indiana Streets and Sidewalks, Section one hundred and fifty point two-four of the City of Madison Building Regulations, and Section one hundred and fifty-three of the City of Madison Subdivision Regulations, and Section one hundred and fifty-five eleven point six-zero of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. Whereas the City of Madison Planning, Preservation, and Design is empowered with collecting certain fees for various services it performs. Those fees must be reasonably related to the services provided. Whereas said fees are required to be established by ordinance. Now therefore be ordained by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, that the same above sections that I previously read and their scheduled fees shall be amended as in conjunction with Appendix A, and that is attached.
Thank you. There we go. Thank you. All right, are there any reports, recommendations, and other business from standing, select study or study committees of City Council? We'll move on. Report of city officials. Chief Wallace had already spoken to you with regards to some information, but most importantly, recognizing the life-saving awards from the officers who responded to that fire structure. Tony Steinhardt, Director of Economic Development.
Good evening, councilors and guests. I want to give you a quick update tonight on Sunrise Crossing. I want to thank you all for attending. Those here who did attend. They have started, and started in full steam ahead mode. You'll see that they're working hard to reclaim the old concrete, and they're using that crushed stone for some of the sloping and retaining walls that have to be added. So that's being reused. And also, the retention pond is under construction as we speak. So I did provide each of you tonight, councilors, the latest layout if you have questions, and that's fairly final. We did uncover, as we mentioned at the groundbreaking, an additional thirty-six inch storm line that was not initially identified, and we will be adding a forty-two inch line to remove about eighty acres of water into the retention pond on that site, just to remind you of that. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to have any of your constituents call, or I'm happy to meet with them at any time. I want to give you some great news about Ready. We've talked a lot about Ready over the months. There's been a lot of starts and stops as it relates to the RDA here locally with the IEDC, but we have finally gotten our approval of dollars. It's great to report that about eighteen percent of the RDA's dollars is coming to Jefferson County in two big projects. One project we're excited about from an economic development perspective and as a community is the joint venture between Hanover College and Ivy Tech to start a veterinary medicine, veterinary medicine science program, and we're looking forward to that. They received five point nine million dollars in funding, or a hundred percent of the funds that they asked for for that project. You'll see some new facilities out on the Hanover College campus as well, and I believe they want to have their first class of veterinary and science majors August of two thousand twenty-four. Our project, Destination Madison, received sixty-five percent of our ask, or two point five five six million dollars. That funding will go towards our gateway improvements to finish the Madison, Indiana Gateway, four twenty-one in the bridge, and will also go to the Arts Corridor and the Mulberry Street parking lot, as well as our comfort station enhancements there as well. We expect the projects for the gateway and the Arts Corridor improvements, those will bid in mid-August, and we expect construction to begin shortly thereafter, but we'll certainly have the projects in the town will be started, Mulberry Street and Comfort Station will start after Chautauqua. The amphitheater project, which is the other project that is the priority, will begin design this September. That is, the amphitheater and related improvements to Bicentennial Park. So a permanent amphitheater structure that's been on that master plan and was originally seen will support our Madison music movement to make Madison, Indiana, its music city, and we expect that construction to start late summer of two thousand twenty-three. And as we previously discussed, the additional funding for that project will come through the Redevelopment Commission in a series, B Bonds, as we talked through the bond process earlier this spring. So we're happy to report that we did receive two point five million dollars, and we'll be able to move forward with both of those projects. Do you have any questions about Ready dollars? Before I introduce Alyssa Folds, our program manager for the alcohol license discussion, I do want to apologize publicly for some miscommunication in this new process. As you know, we passed a resolution recently that made some changes, and with that, I think a couple things didn't get, t's get crossed and i's get dotted the way they should have. I apologize for that and take full responsibility for that, but I will ask Alyssa to present tonight one application for the Ohio Theater.
All right, so the application, like Tony stated, is for the Ohio Theater. The Ohio Theater meets the minimum requirements that were established in the guidelines. These requirements for the cultural venue is to have the capacity of one hundred and twenty-five people and abide by the state minimum food requirement. This venue attracts tourists and locals through hosting their shows and live performances. They plan to continue to boost their marketing endeavors by working on their website, social media presence, as well as looking into other avenues for marketing such as Spotify and Pandora. This venue will be used for film festivals, live music, events, and more. They currently hold four to ten events monthly, but plan to do more in the future. They currently have raised three hundred thousand of their needed one million for interior renovations, and while they were not funded through Ready, the city will continue to support the exterior renovations. Currently, they are volunteer-based, but once renovations are completed, they will have hire for full-time employees. We recommend that the council give consent in granting their liquor license. And then I would now like to introduce Elizabeth Oxer to go over more details or answer any questions for you guys.
Well, thank you so much for creating this permit for event venues. As much as people love our popcorn, we're not quite to the point where we were going to meet that restaurant sales requirement for food, so thank you for being flexible with us. We're already pulling from the region, which we think is wonderful because we want more people to come here. Last weekend, we had a Beatles tribute band concert, and with the pre-sales, people came from over twenty-two different counties, so we were definitely pleased with that. And we're currently allowing people to bring in food from nearby businesses. So Pacalana's poke wagon was parked outside. We had a lot of pizza uncommon and Hong Kong kitchen coming through the theater, so we're trying to be a good friend of our neighbors on our downtown. We really care about them. And we're also starting to pull attention globally because Darren Means created an event called Horror at the Ohio, which is going to be the weekend of October twenty-second, and original filmmakers can submit short and long videos, and he's already had seven hundred submissions from over forty countries all over the world. So they created this really cool, you know, kind of spooky logo featuring the Ohio Theater in downtown, so momentum is going fantastic for us. Plumbing Works, we have great HVAC, we have a roof. The building's watertight, so we are very thrilled, and we appreciate your support with what we're doing. So if you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Elizabeth, you want to talk about partnership with other organizations in the community? Because I think that's also just a fantastic attribute of how the Ohio Theater fits in with the Cultural Arts District.
It's been wonderful. Of course, we received support from Stellar Madison with the Redevelopment Commission and some of the funds to do the roof and the HVAC and the masonry. The Community Foundation has had our back since before day one, when this was still just a planning phase. We sat down with Bill, and we're like, are we crazy? He's like, yep, let's do it, you know? So we have their support. We have Girls Inc. there every single Tuesday throughout the summer. We partner with other schools, and we have lots of different messages on the marquee. So we're trying to bring in as many people to the party as possible because this isn't just, you know, our little tiny theater. You know, it's the community's theater. We're all volunteers. We want everybody to have as much access to this as possible, so we're going to try to continue expanding and diversifying our events so that we can bring in a bigger audience.
Sounds like Darren's creating a film festival.
Yes, I've heard we need to talk to Hannah because she loves Halloween, as do you.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Thank you, Elizabeth.
All right, thanks.
Tony or Alyssa may ask you to come back to the podium, and then we'll... What we need is a motion to approve the application to grant one of our riverfront development districts, alcohol licenses. It was created for cultural art venues. As you know, this just begins the process. They still have to apply to the Jefferson County Alcoholic Beverage Commission, as well as the State of Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. So all we are doing is giving a favorable recommendation to award one of these specific licenses from our allocation.
I move to approve the riverfront liquor license for the Ohio Theater.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Comments, questions from the audience? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council, and moving forward, all applications will be available at City Hall for you guys to review, just to make you aware, and I'll send emails out as well as reminders, so thank you, guys.
All right, moving on, we'll jump down to public comments. Is anybody here who would like to address the mayor's office and city council? Please come to the podium. Identify yourself, name and address, and make your comments, and we look forward to hearing from anybody.
Hi, I'm Jill Carlin. Nice to meet all of you.
Thank you, Jill.
Hi. A year ago, I rode a motor scooter from Clarksville here. Am I crazy? I spent three hours here, and I made a little movie, and I didn't think about it for a long time. And about two weeks ago, I said to my boyfriend, "What do you think about doing a rehab somewhere?" And he lives in Clarksville. I live in Florida. And he said, "Okay." So I started looking in Louisville and Clarksville in that area, and I found some dumps to rehab. And I said, "Why don't I look in that little town I like so well?" So I opened the computer, and I clicked on, and I made a bid. The first thing I saw. And then I came here a few days ago to seal the deal. And it wasn't exactly what I expected. It was in really bad shape. It's a historic home, and I'm involved in historic... It's a historic home, and I'm involved in historic preservation. So I understand the criteria that is involved in creating a historic building and maintaining a historic building. And I had the amazing opportunity to talk to Brooke Peach, and she has been guiding me through the whole process. And I still have another day on my counter offer. But what I wanted to tell you all is I love this place. And everybody, and I met the mayor today, and everybody has, and everybody in City Hall has been so kind, and everybody that I've met on the street, and I went to church, and just everybody's... This is like amazing. It's like an episode from The Twilight Zone where the guy goes to this like perfect town called Willoughby. And I just have to say thank you so very much. I have a really big plan. And my late husband was the father of environmental architecture. He was a genius, and he left me this legacy, which I donated to North Carolina State University a few years ago. It's for 100% completely self-sustainable buildings. So I want to create a completely self... I wasn't planning this when I started this. This was not what I was planning when I clicked click. I just thought I was going to do a nice little rehab. And now it's turned into, maybe I can make this building 100% sustainable because there's really very little left of it. So this is just a kudos to all of you. I listened to your meeting today. I've just find you all, everybody, this whole town, something very special. And I'm sure I'm not the first person who came from another place who has said that, but I look forward to living here. And I look forward, if this isn't the right property, to finding the right property. And I just wanted to, once again, thank you all and tell you something's very special. I don't know what else to say. But I can share this book with you at some point. It shows how to build houses that don't have bills for heating and cooling. And then the most recent iteration, these were built all over the world, and the most recent iteration of that have never been built, but maybe Madison will be the first place that they are built. And those are the ones that are net zero, completely self-sustainable. They take nothing from the earth, air, or water in their operation. They put nothing into the earth, air, or water in their operation. They take care of all of their own utilities, lights, gas, water, waste management, and food production. And they protect life in the event of any kind of disaster. Now, Lee's been gone for 17 years almost, and they still have not yet to be built. But they're going to be built like one of these days really soon, and it might be right here with the reception that I've been receiving regarding that. So Tony was great, everybody in City Hall, great. Thank you so very much. I look forward to working with all of you and making this dream a reality. Thank you.
Jill, the big reveal would be where's that property that you came to look at?
526 Walnut Street.
Walnut Street?
And I've heard not such good reviews on Walnut Street from some people, but...
I love the mayor. I mean, I love Walnut Street.
But yeah, the big reveal is hopefully my very low-ball offer, now that I have seen it, it's, will be accepted. So thank you all.
Thank you for investing in our community and visiting here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's been, no matter what, it's been a lot of fun. I'm staying for a month. I found a place to stay for a month and take care of all of this, but thank you all. It's been a lot of fun, and I enjoy coming to your city commission meeting. I went to the public, another meeting yesterday, and...
Walnut Street is an up-and-coming neighborhood, and there's some great, great property down there and people.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jill. Anybody else who'd like to address mayor's office or city council now at this time? All right, moving on to my part of the agenda, and I'll keep it brief because it's been a very, very wonderful evening, celebrating, you know, all of those who make our community what it is, as Jill was, you know, learning as she's visiting here. As Tony said, thank you for attending the groundbreaking the other day. Work literally began before all of the canopies were removed off of the site the other day, and we'll continue with a great sense of urgency, and we'll see, we'll see that project continue to grow in the next few months, and look forward to a big announcement in a couple of weeks as our developer, Craig Turner from CRM, revealed up there. There's still a couple of retailers in the space who have signed letters of intent but are finishing the negotiations on the leases, and they're going to be very, very, very exciting. The other thing is that Tony and I have also been meeting with other investors who want to come and invest in Madison because they see the fabulous things that are happening. They see the other investment, that's currency for our community. Hannah is not here tonight, but she is planning a national night out, the annual national night out, be sometime in August. Chief Wallace talked about the expanded part-time MPD resources that have been invaluable. That was approved in a board of public works meeting yesterday. Also approved was probably about another eight or 10 PACE grants. And we also approved some final PACE grants. And what I love about those meetings is we see the befores and afters, and the transformations is happening all across town, but even more specifically in our designated revitalization areas. It's great to see these neighborhoods transform, and I'm so grateful for all of the investment that is happening across the community by so many people that is enhancing, you know, Madison's quality of life. Hannah, I'm sorry, Nicole, through the Historic District Board of Review, is also working on the updated historic survey, which hasn't been done in probably a couple of decades. We're nearing completion on that. That's going to the next HDBR meeting, as well as continuing to work on getting public comment on the updated guidelines for Historic District Board of Review. The reason I'm bringing all this up is that there's just a tremendous amount of planning that's happening across the community with so many people, whether it be, you know, for sidewalks, or parking, or economic development, or capital management, or budgeting. It's all about the planning, candidly. And what we are offered often is a lot of great ideas, and we got to figure out how do we incorporate them? How do we put them in the deck? And we're constantly reshuffling that deck and reprioritizing, but also still keeping focus, as what Tony was describing here with the Ready Grants, and being ready almost to go to bid on several projects. But if you look around the community, there's so much happening. You guys are also involved in so many different boards and committees that's moving the community forward in so many ways. I appreciate all of your efforts. Also would happy to turn the floor over if any of you want to talk about what's going on in any of the boards or committees that you're participating in. The floor is yours before we adjourn. Our next meeting is August the 2nd, and there's a lot on the agenda, as you can tell already, it's being teed up, and then more as we head into the tail end of the third quarter and really, you know, kind of round third base and head to home before the end of, before the end of the year. Tremendous amount of development and growth, and opportunity, and festivals, just fun stuff to do that makes Madison cool. I'll stop there and let council address our community if you want to. Again, our next meeting is Tuesday, August 2nd. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. All right, now here, and we'll maybe take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thanks, council. Thanks, everybody.